Good evening. Welcome to the Central Board of Education. Meeting for September 8th. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. McCain seconded, Mr. Gervardo, all in favor, six zero. Thank you. Before consent agenda, I would like to make a statement. I want to share an update regarding Mr. Stephen Lasekko. As you are probably aware, the video involving Mr. Lasekko and its related disruption has resulted in a decision to place him on administrative leave. It is a personal matter because he is a tenured employee. New York State law mandates that we proceed with the utmost confidentiality for the integrity of the ensuing investigation. While we respect and value individuals' rights of free speech and due process, we must understand there may be consequences when our conduct disrupts our educational environment and impairs our school's operation. The district's responsibility is to foster a safe environment for our learning community. The divisive impact of Mr. Lasekko's comments and its aftermath have compromised the district's ability to fulfill its mission. Our focus must remain on the well-being of our students, staff, and our learning community. Thank you, and that's our discussion about Mr. Lasekko. I have a motion for consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion for the consent agenda for approval as well as for the classified addendum and a certificated addendum.
First, Mr. McCain, McCain seconded, Mr. McCully, all in favor, six zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Board of Education resource. I do not have a report at this time. Any other board members wish to report? Okay, next item is selecting a voting delegate for the NISP business meetings. So we haven't had an advanced conversation about this. If there's no one opposed, I will take that on again. It will be a virtual session, so I can do it from the top of my own home. So if there's no objections, I will volunteer, so I need a motion if that's what you wish. First, Mr. Zarnicki, second, Mr. Gervardo, all in favor, six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always a funny thing. Okay, next item on our agenda is superintendent report, capital improvement project, and we have a few guests. Thank you all for summing. Are we going to do it from up front?
You guys want to go up front? So Joe Palato and Kevin. None of you are here from campus construction, and Kevin Rodamacher from Babel Associates are here, our architectural firm. And, you know, I think what they're going to share with you is we've really done a great job this summer and this past spring, and give you some updates of where we're at with the capital project. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining us, and whatever order you want to go in. Mr. Allen's got you queued up there.
So hi, everyone. As Dan said, my name is Joe Palato. That's Kevin Downey. This is Kevin Rodamacher, and this is an update on your eighteen point one capital improvement project. It's September twenty one. So the first thing I want to talk about is the overall budget of the project. This is a long time ago now. The referendum was twelve million, three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, which is just over nine million dollars of construction contracts, three point six million incidentals, and then we have a construction contingency of six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. We have used approximately a third of it. And another side note, we are sixty percent through construction. It's a two-year project, so we're ahead of schedule. So some major works that we completed this summer in Burnaby, we completed the corridor ceiling. We swapped out all the ceiling tile for the new crude tile. We replaced the PA system with a Rocco system. The cafeteria received air conditioning and some other mechanical improvements, as well as some sound panels that look a little bit better, in my opinion, than the metal yellow panels. Burnaby Road was reconstructed along with Trobridge Road, all the way up to the maintenance facility right here. Cottler Grove, we replaced the turf field at Ranger Stadium. There's a nice, large, special Ranger logo in yellow. It's so large I couldn't even get a photo. And we replaced a bunch of sidewalks with concrete sidewalks. So quick before I get to these, anything Marshall and Astros was complete, was scheduled for 2021. It was completed this year. So we replaced Ranger Road, as you may have seen. It was in pretty bad condition, and now it's fresh and smooth and looks great. But we added two entrances to the, or we made the Canal View parking lot two entrances instead of one. Now it's an in and out, and added a few more parking spaces, as well as sealed the lot and replaced some. Look, worse potholes are there. And we also replaced the PA system there. At the Wilson High School, we replaced the, constructed.
Can you go back one?
Yep.
Was there a sidewalk added?
No.
Is that?
That's existing.
There's a bunch of rock garden.
Oh, yeah, that's like.
Yeah, it's drainage.
It's gravel.
It's mowing.
And whoever started the street.
So Wilson, we reconstructed the parking lot.
That was new in the last project, the other side, if you remember.
I mean, there.
Over in there.
The left-hand photo, along with.
Oh, that's a.
Yes, that is a new segment.
And that's the boarding sidewalk.
There is a gutter and new sidewalk.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Wilson Road, we replaced the parking lot, which was in bad condition, and we recreated it, which has improved the drainage. And then Wilson Road along the parking lot was scheduled for next year. It was completed this year. Tennis courts, the asphalt is down. We're waiting for the surfacing to be placed. There's a little bit of a scheduling mishap, but it will go down.
Was there a problem with tennis courts, too? Something happen?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll explain it real quick.
The asphalt in the tennis courts was.
There were a number of issues. There was drainage issues. They have been fixed. There were some grading issues that have been fixed. There were some voids that were in the upper portion of the court with asphalt.
Right.
So right now, we're in the process of making sure verifying that the top coating manufacturer will warranty on top of what's there. And if not, it's likely it's going to go down there as long as the warranty's good.
Following up with that.
Yeah.
Obviously, this was sports, we jumped along, get down as possible. And finally, we did sidewalks from the east block into the building, east block around the back of the school, and the new island. Month, the cafeteria had the mechanical improvements, and the ten classrooms on the east side were all renovated, as well as the fifth grade wing, to see if it used sinks. The five classrooms and the fifth grade wing were all scheduled next year. Some other piece that we knocked out ahead of schedule. Has the cafeteria, not much has changed. And then we expanded the parking lot, adding about twenty-five new spaces to the east block of the.
The HVAC moving in this year, is that?
Yes. I think it's right now, we're ready for students.
Quick question, Joe. Was the bus loop included at month?
Yes, that is next year.
I was just going to say, next year, we pick up where the line and sand stops at this year to do all the fresh loop.
Sorry, Ross. Thank you. And transportation facility, we installed a new gas fuel tank, twelve thousand gallons, quite large. And then we started the parking expansion, so it's up to binder right now, and we'll be topped even with the reconstruction next year of the main bus facility. And then in this building, we replaced the flooring on the first floor, the Ozzie's wing, with this pattern. We removed the asbestos tile and replaced BCT, and then the door at the end of that hallway was replaced with. Here's a, we did a lot of sidewalks and stuff, so here's this something. So next year. All right, so we're ahead of schedule, and we still have some major pieces. The Canal View or Coggy, let's keep it a bus loop that will be reconstructed as well as the month bus loop. Wilson High School, the library renovated, and the main office. Canal View, there's some basement repair on the roof, as well as paint the hallway. Transportation, as I mentioned, we will reconstruct the main lot. That van sailor has some mechanical improvements as well, and the classroom will be. I have any questions?
I have one, just a trivial one. How many gallons does a gas tank up at the bus garage?
It's ten thousand to two thousand.
Yeah, it's interesting. Let's take it by itself.
So the roadways, we're very happy about. We know we got to continue that in our future projects. Probably, to me, the most exciting part about this project has been the HVAC for the elementary schools that didn't have it in their cafeterias, because it gives them a place to grow on those hot days where they can break up classrooms and have breaks. Where before, it was just Canal View, because it was a new build, and it was only one of that AC. So, and that was one of our goals of this project. That'll be finished next year with.
Yeah.
So. So really good shape. It allows us some options. We're looking at some of our alternatives. Alternatives, I mean, and because the money's cut down, we've only spent some of the residual, or the.
Continency.
Continency fund, we've only spent a portion of that.
A third of it, Joe said, so a couple hundred thousand of the six. There's also a pretty good healthy budget still being retained for the financing fees that we'll continue to look at with Rick, and potentially, there's an opportunity for those, some of that dollars to go to construction. Financially, the district's in great shape on the capital project side.
It's a good market right now for us, with some of the fitting that they've done. That whole piece last year, remember when we went out early, we get the, we needed approval. It was a brilliant move in terms of buying power and having that done. So I think we kept. And the bus campus, and the well on that was good, but.
So congratulations. We had a great summer. The contractors performed really well. Your schools, from our perspective, are ready to go.
They're great working with us, too.
Yeah, we gained efficiencies that, you know, fortunately, the benefit of the pandemic is you guys closed some spaces down early, and the contractors were able to take advantage of that.
So that's true.
And they gained efficiency, which we think helps with the quality and everything else. Wish you the best of luck this week and with your reopening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Call a little later.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good night.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Damon.
Yeah.
You too.
Okay, so our next item on our agenda is review of the code of conduct update.
Jonathan's here with us. He just did a public hearing for us to cover this. And thank you for Kate and Chalali for working with Jonathan on some of the amendments. And I know we're going to say, oh, pretty much.
No, Lori did.
Oh, sorry. That's right. Change it up. So again, when we talked about this a few weeks ago, it was important to assist the schools, and especially the administrators and teachers, with making sure we draw attention to the changes of what COVID's done for us. And masking is one of those big areas, and Jonathan's going to talk about how we've incorporated that with the code of conduct during this temporary tanker.
Thank you.
Okay.
So as you probably know, the board approved the code of conduct back on June twenty-third as part of the safe plan after a public hearing back in May. Coming forward to this point, there's a lot of feedback from our reopening task force, board members, and the training new attended at Monroe County Ozzies about including some additional provisions in the code of conduct with respect to pandemic, our pandemic response. Essentially, our new provisions that are proposed for you today are included as a two-page appendix, two-and-a-half-page appendix that will be attached to the back of the code of conduct, temporary in nature, hopefully, but in a single place so that the administrators can reference them. That was there for, I posed that question to them, whether they wanted me to go through and input those different sections into the code, or if it would be better as a single standalone, and they thought it would be better this way. So that's the reason why it's just going to be attached to the back. But we are, we had the public hearing earlier this afternoon, about five thirty. No comments or questions or anything, any response from the seventeen participants. So hopefully that means we're good. But I'll go through each section, try and skim through each section quickly. You've all had a chance to read it. But the face covering section really is the question of why you need the face covering. It's recommended, it's mandated for us now, slightly different from the reopening plan. We are mandating them during instruction. This section does include the exceptions to where they will be mandated. But it also includes a section on the types of face masks that are not allowed or face covering that are not allowed, which includes gaiters, scarves, bandanas, and masks with exhalation valves. That was new last week with additional guidance from the Monroe County Department of Health, and I know Lori just brought it up, I think, two or three weeks ago. And we had posed that question to the Department of Health, and all we got back was, we will put it in next week's FAQ, and they were, had a little, their wording was a little sketchy, but then another organization, the Finger Lakes, Finger Lakes reopening task force was much more clear about banning those types of masks, so we were able to come out with that. And that is an FAQ on our website as well, if anyone watching wants to read about that. But it does include added, it's a line where the building administrator can also be in the face covering unacceptable. An example that Lori brought up was a doily being used with the face covering. Clearly does not go through, does not comply with the idea of either filtering or stopping droplet control. So that kind of mask, or one of the other kind of masks that are disallowed, a building administrator would be able to request that student remove that mask and offer them disposable face masks, which we have, it's not a limited supply, but we have a very large supply of masks ready to go for all students and staff who may require a disposable face mask.
So Jonathan, inappropriate, is there also a statement, or did you just go back to the general code of conduct? Is inappropriate images or patterns or statements for face covering?
It goes back to the code of conduct. It references the dress code as well as statements that are made that cannot be disruptive, cannot advocate for alcohol, tobacco, drug use, things like that. And again, that would also fall to the building administrator to deem that unacceptable. The similar, the same way they'd say a T-shirt is unacceptable.
A piece of clothing.
Yeah. Yep. So I think I missed vocal for, but the dress code, the next section's about the dress code. So essentially, the requirement to wear a mask needs to be placed somewhere from a logistical standpoint. So by taking it and making it a part of the dress code, whereas what we had before was just an affirmative, or, and to the negative, do not wear inappropriate clothing. Now we actually have an affirmative statement. You are required to wear this at all times, except for the four exceptions that we're laying out here, which includes meal times during designated math breaks, during, while playing an instrument for the schools that are still doing band course. I guess the good report, but. And when an individual has an approved medical exemption. And I know there were emails going around before today. There is a form that Monroe County Department of Health put out, which has the specifics there, and I believe we are putting in place a process for those exemptions to come through the school and to be approved or not after reviewed by our doctor. But it also informs the students that we will provide them a mask if needed. So getting to the violation, the violation of the dress code, essentially, we put the rule in place. The violation of that rule is in support of it. It's a simple rule, but it could be complex in that application, because students, hopefully, they will be complying, and they will comply because their friends are complying, and every, all their adults are complying, and we don't have that issue. However, if it gets to the point where a student refuses to wear a mask, they will be offered a disposable mask first. If the student still continues to refuse to wear a mask, then that student could be taken to a designated space, wherever the district, or wherever the building designates. That student can wait. I did not want to designate that as the isolation or illness room, but I didn't think that would be appropriate. You know, know that that student says that they're refusing to wear a mask. So at the elementary level, they also do not have an ISS room, or in-school suspension room. So I left it generic and to a designated space, and essentially, the building principal could designate that space, maybe an office or some other, something else. But consequences, again, and that's for all of these behaviors, consequences could be anything along the progressive line of discipline which we typically apply. So there could be a day of suspension, a week of suspension, a longer-term suspension. And that's the advice that we receive from Monroe County Ozzies, is the idea that you apply the same rules that you've applied before, so applying those progressive kinds of suspension. But during that suspension, you are then giving, providing them the alternative instruction, which we normally have to provide, but you're doing it remotely. So in essence, you're, you're not transferring them to a remote program. You are putting them on suspension through the remote program. They're still going to get their instruction remotely and not coming into school for those two days a week, depending on which group. Whether it becomes such as a permanent, I don't see it becoming a permanent suspension as much as it may just be a long-term suspension for a student who repeatedly refuses to wear a mask or some of the other behaviors that I'm going to get into in a second. And Mr. Putten, this is where I had a section on reminder that masks must be appropriated. So conduct endangering to the health and safety of others, it's a really broad category in most, in many codes of conduct. It could be a threat, it could be other behaviors, but in this context, it is really about basic behaviors that could result in spread of the virus. When we were discussing this with the administrators, Mr. McCabe was at first hesitant to include this in here, but then realized that there were probably would be a couple of kids who did this kind of behavior, who are not mature enough to handle themselves, and something like purposefully sneeze on someone or cough on someone, spit on someone, or either a student or adult. But I also included repeated refusal to wear a mask. I mean, if you're talking about masks being the basic protection that we are all required to comply with to prevent spread of the virus, in many ways, they are endangering themselves and/or others in that process by refusing to wear a mask during the school day. And then also adding, removing, destroying, or defacing the plastic safety barriers that we have put up on the desks. It's generic to safety barriers. If we put anything else up in the lunchroom or the libraries, the band room, or the cafeterias, but they'll be barriers in different locations, as well as failure to comply with social distancing protocols. And again, that would, while it's stated here, it would be more of a progressive, you know, you're not just going to do it to spend a kid because they cross over the yellow line that we've installed in the hallway. It's repeated behaviors where they are plowing the rules, if you will, on a repeated basis. And again, the same line, the consequences could rise from a level of suspension or move into, or rather, transition to the remote learning program.
We went from cigarettes to vaping to masks versus pensions, right?
Yeah. And finally, it's more of just a reminder that remote instruction is an extension of the school day. The code of conduct applies to students while they are on remote instruction. It applies to their use of the technology. It applies, you know, if they start Zoom bombing or uploading offensive pictures at their background screens, or advocating for drug or alcohol or tobacco or vaping use during the Zoom, or using harassing or discriminatory language during the Zoom. Use, you actually using drugs and alcohol, tobacco, which has happened in a couple of instances here while the students are on Zoom call. Or violating the acceptable use policy for the dress code if they just wake up and get out of bed and they're wearing something inappropriate they need to change. Again, the same line, consequences may rise to the level. But if you eventually get to the point of either suspension or transmission to the remote learning programs, leave that part of the instruction aside as to how the programs are going to work. But again, that is the recommendation of the Monroe County Ozzies to move towards that when suspensions are in place. And how we work through, we still have to have a discussion through the PLC program. What they, you know, working through how we're going to implement those suspensions is still something that we are discussing. So that is the basis of what I have before you as proposed language. Got a lot of comments from the principals, and I had talked about a couple of these things with McCabe and Mr. Sintola. But does anybody here have any additional questions regarding what I put forward?
I think we've already answered all our questions. Hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this requires an action to approve the update to the code of conduct?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updates to the code of conduct.
So. All in favor? Let's go.
Thank you very much.
Anything for superintendent report, or?
Yeah, I just, I'll just share that this was obviously the strangest opening day we've had, at least in my career at Central Board since nineteen ninety. I want to thank Ty and Cory for all their work to make sure that things went smoothly this morning. I think a couple of buildings had staff spread out in a larger area, but people could choose to be in their offices or in a room. And the PD that was put together by the instruction office and Cory and Ty, we've gotten great comments already back on that, the thoroughness of making sure people felt comfortable with what they had to worry about when they're back to school. So it might even be worthwhile to let you see some of that stuff, you know, that schools you at some point, because they did a really great job. So thank you to Ty and Cory, awesome job. And really, I didn't go out and about that much today, but I know Ty visited a few places and people are getting their rooms ready and getting used to the world we have right now. Sorry, can't see. And so I think that if we're in good shape, we have a lot to do. I did make one comment this morning and told everyone that I'm sure we're going to need to refine some of the work we're doing and some of the systems we've got in place and so on. But Cory's testing our daily health checks and screening. I think we're in pretty good shape with that. Do you want to speak to that, Cory?
Sure. So we started beta testing that about, honestly, three weeks ago, and started with our admin staff and rolled it out to larger and larger groups every, say, three or four days. Went live with it with teachers and faculty last week. We were able to make a couple tweaks before today, and I made a request for anyone coming into the district today. They did not get this survey. To please contact me. They didn't get by eight o'clock. At last hole, we had ten. But what we're doing is we're kind of helping those teachers to locate that in their inbox. What we're finding more often than not is it is going to another holder, and we just have to find, help them retrieve it from the holder. So we're hoping by tomorrow, we're down to single digits, if not zero.
This is what question started for you. So with orientation, myself or Mrs. G didn't get a email link for the health check thing.
So for the ninth grade orientation?
Age of eighth grade for Cottler Grove. We never got, she wanted to do it there with Tracy.
Okay.
But we never got the email, just letting you know.
I guess. You let, you let Mr. Sintola know as well, correct?
I did, but it was the first day tomorrow morning. Okay.
Cory, did you figure out the snap tool with the ninth grade orientation?
We did.
Okay, great.
Yep. So that was all, you know, part and parcel to helping us beta test that, to make sure that we were up and ready for the first day of school.
Yeah.
It's interesting. We went to Coltrix when I started talking to Cory about, if you remember, it was for alumni. They start doing a better job at serving, and it's turned out to be a great tool for us in many ways, especially translation as well of our letters. So, so the more we learn about it, I think it'll help us with other initiatives and things we have to do going forward. And, yeah, I'm sure you saw on the news yesterday, I believe it was, or today, Fairport had their, Fairport was the first one to have a case at schools. I'm sure everyone's going to have this, and we'll follow the Department of. Fairport was the first one to have a case at schools. I'm sure everyone's gonna have this and we'll follow the Department of Health guidelines. We'll keep you informed and when that starts happening. We hope it doesn't. That's really good.
I wanna thank everyone that worked, that has been working so hard for opening day. Unfortunately, we're shadowed by other things, but I'm glad we got to today. Are there TVs that the board can attend over the next couple of days that we have time?
So, what we've done for this year, knowing that it's kind of a unique, yes, experience for all involved. We dedicated nine to 11 o'clock for the next three days. Teachers have the choice. They either participate in a live webinar, which they would register for, or we're doing self-guided PD for the school to course that Mr. Melkay just mentioned. So, what I will do is I'll add all the board as members for that self-guided PD. You can just see the information that our teachers have access to.
Great. And I wouldn't be remiss. I mean, the navigation through the staffing that Jamie's worked on has been amazing. We, just the challenges of some of the intermittent and all that. And Rick is working on making sure all PPs in place and how we categorize it and make sure that we're aligned with some of the state brands and things of that sort in federal. So, like Kevin said, everyone all hands on deck. And we have just so much more to do, but it's a great team and we'll keep working on it. And we meet tomorrow, the, our, from tomorrow or, yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow, the STA, to kind of keep working on that. And it'll keep you informed and Friday news and announcements regarding some of that. Thanks for asking.
So. Meeting evaluation. Worked well, considering. We have the potential for, up until October 4th, to continue virtual meetings for the public, which could, October 4th could result in another extension of the executive order. But what we ought to start thinking about is how we would hold a board meeting with limited space and potentially change the venue so we can have a public participation once again. So, we could have students come in again. That's what we all want to see again. So, we have a motion to move into an executive session to win negotiations, particular persons employment, and public safety. Mr. Maselli, Mr. Givardo, all in favor? If so. We are willing to stay in this room. We have, hey, we are entering executive session at 7:24. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to exit executive session.
And seconded, Mike, all in favor? Six oh. Hey, we need a.
Dave?
Motion.
Yeah. I would, Dave, go like five votes.
Okay, five votes. Six oh. Okay. We need a motion.
A motion to approve the personnel item and discuss an executive session. Second?
Yeah.
So, Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Listen in.